Westen, are you guys ready?
Ready.
Okay, let's convene our Tuesday, September 9th, special joint session between the City Council and the Arts Commission. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, roll call. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
And Councilmember Whitman is remote. I'm sorry.
He's in.
Mayor Whitman is currently absent. And we have Councilmember Rule participating remotely tonight.
Cool. All right, there she is. And then now the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Montgomery.
Yes. And please rise, everybody. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. And to the council, an approval of the agenda, please.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, great.
And since Mayor, pardon me, since we do have a remote council member, I'll just make the announcement. All actions must be taken by roll call.
Thank you.
So, roll call. Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Mang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. Okay, so I'm just gonna say a couple of quick things. First of all, I'm so excited that we're all here. It's fantastic. And I'm going to have the Chair of the Commission say a few words, and there's a presentation. But I just wanted to give one preface, which is, let's not feel rushed. And so we have a bunch to talk about, and let's think this is the beginning of a to-be-continued. So if we think we're having a great conversation, let's not feel the need to get to the end. We'll just schedule another one. So with that in mind, I hope we can get to a great conversation when we get to the second portion. Please, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Gilman, Mayor Protem Lang, Councilmembers Mang and Rule up there, Commissioners and our guests. I'm Smitty West, Chair of the OI Arts Commission. It's an honor to join you tonight as we strengthen the partnership between City Council and our Arts Commission. For centuries, the Ojai Valley has drawn artists and art patrons alike. Our commission exists to nurture that legacy, encouraging creative exchange, fostering public and private collaborations, and advising council on acquisitions and site-specific proposals that enrich our community. In the 1990s, for short history, Mayor Nina Shelley and Potter Viva Kahino, Otto's wife, formed the city's first Art Committee, it was called. That pioneering effort led to the establishment of the Arts Commission and in 2013, the Public Art Ordinance, which sets aside 2% of qualifying development budgets for public art. That policy gave birth to Ojai's Public Art Program and affirmed the economic and cultural value of arts here in the valley. Today, five dedicated volunteer Commissioners guide our work. We operate on a strategic plan. By statute, it's called the Five-Year Plan, but our mission extends beyond a document. We serve as the city's art advisors and champions. Through public art installations, grant programs, educational seminars, and our recognition awards, we recognize excellence and support professional growth for artists across Ojai. This evening, I'll give a quick summary of our Five-Year Plan, highlight some of the measurable accomplishments that we've achieved in the last 18 months, identify areas where we need to tweak or refocus, and invite your guidance as we refresh our plan this winter, every two years by statute. Afterwards, I'll welcome Vice Chair Steiner to provide an in-depth overview of the Public Art Program. Then Mayor Andy and I will launch a discussion on key topics where council input will help us move forward constructively. Okay? While our immediate objectives keep us grounded, two ambitious goals drive our vision: to establish a centrally located, city-sponsored art center, a welcoming home for studios, galleries, workshops, and performance spaces that will become the beating heart of Ojai's creative economy. And secondly, to commission and install a landmark public artwork that celebrates Ojai, its history, culture, spirit, and honors our valley's legacy and invests in a vibrant future. So these are kind of the five-year kind of big items that the small things we do are hopefully leading toward. Progress to date since the establishment of our Gantt chart. Our plan leverages, we use modern tools, AI augmented Gantt chart that tracks tasks in real time. You'll find its full details in your meeting packet, but I've drilled it down to just a few of the accomplishments we've had. There's, I think, 119 actual steps in the Gantt chart. And these are some things that we have accomplished. We divided the Arts Commission into kind of functional roles. Commission Health. Let me mention that one. From my experience in Rotary and in some other organizations, if you don't take care of your council, your commission, your committee, you don't take care of yourselves, you know, you won't be able to do a good job. And so it's worthy of having a plan in its own. So we have Commission Health, our Grants Program, which you're familiar with, our Education Program, our Communication Function, our Technology Function, and our Public Art. And we've divided these among Commissioners rather than dividing by art type and that sort of thing. So some of our accomplishments that were in the Gantt chart that have been achieved was that we hosted two informal fellowship gatherings. We'd like to do more, but we wanted to get together outside of the work that we normally do. Something small, but I think is significant. Pam LaGrau etched these name tags for us so that when we go to arts events in the city, you know, we're representing the city and our respect for what the people are doing. Standardized our budgeting process and completed Brown Act training. Those are something we needed to do, and I thank staff and city and council for helping us do that. We implemented a clear division tasks among the Commissioners, as I mentioned. We held a very successful public gathering sponsored by the inn with artists, local, state, and county government officials and art planning consultants. It was a wonderful event, and it starts to create that healthy connection between community and the commission as well. I'm going to move to Grants. We've launched, we've done better job launching our press releases and our social media outreach on our Grants Program. We've established a process under Commissioner Karina to have an Arts Grant Selection Committee to keep best practices and keep things on track, you know, that make recommendations to us as we make recommendations to council on the grants funding. And we rolled out an online fillable grant application that's done online instead of paper the way it used to be done. Auditing, and auditing is being important, and we're underway with our auditing on past grant recipients. And our education side, which is Commissioner Grau, we've had, I put seven, I think it's seven professional enrichment seminars for creatives here in the valley. These are free seminars that artists, art organizations, anyone can attend to try to do what we can to help that the profession of a creative in our valley is a better and better profession every year. Someone that can feed their family, pay their rent, cover their insurance. And so having topics like how to price things, how to do estate planning, how to do an elevator speech, you know, how to use social media, how to do grant applications, that sort of thing. I see that as a strong way the government can impact our creative economy. All right. And we're now partnering with vocational arts programs in the city to establish mentorships. That's, we're rolling that out right now. We're very proud of that part of our education. On the communication side, you've seen this more often at council meetings. That was one of our things that we said we would do. And we've connected with local service clubs and also neighboring cities for best practice sharing. Coming out of COVID, we produced two videos of public art tours, so we could find a way to share our public art with people when they were kind of still in there. And they've become part of our rotating Channel 10 programming as well as on the website as well. Technology, we've been slower on. We haven't done a lot, but we did get this Five-Year Plan online and got it so that's a living, breathing, modern tool that can be checked at any time and upgraded to online grant application portal and completed the video-based public art tours. And lastly, and it will segue into Commissioner Steiner here is our public art, but I was going to just mention a couple bullets from our plan. We, CAPA, which is the Committee to Approve Public Art, is something that we didn't use it yet, but we have put it together. So that money is spent approved by a CAPA. We did convene a mural jury to implement the new mural ordinances, I don't know if they're new, but for the approval of Camp Ojai, what's it called? Summer Camp. And that was a delightful way to involve the community, not just in beautifying the city, but involving them in governance as well. And they all left with a good, you know, with a good feeling about how government and the arts can work together. We secured and renewed for 10 years our contract with the Ojai Valley Community Hospital. What do they call themselves? Memorial Health System, where a large part of the city collection is hanging in there. And they're stewarding our stuff very nicely over there. And we've successfully consulted and guided the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa on transitioning three of their works or not, you know, public art that are present on their property as well. Vice Chair Steiner will now walk us through the Public Art Program in greater detail. Thank you. I look forward to your insight as we refine our path forward.
Thank you. So I'm delighted to talk with you about our public art collection. Bridget, well, let me first start. Our collection is a contemporary collection of three-dimensional sculptural objects, mostly regional artists commissioned in 2002 and going forward. There are no flashpoints in this collection. It's a very tame collection, let's say. There are no monuments to Confederate generals. There are no, you know, conquerors of indigenous persons. There are no objects of cultural patrimony. There are no works with social, political, or ideological messaging. And so unlike many communities where these flashpoints in fact matter, there's nothing for our community to look at in terms of engagement about what to retain and what to remove. So our job is made much easier for that reason. Our job is to conserve and maintain. This commission has instituted best practices in the public art field. We undertook last year a first-ever comprehensive conservation assessment with funds you allotted, thank you for that, performed by recognized professionals who have conducted such assessments for other public jurisdictions such as Ventura and quite a number of others. The full assessment is right now with Bridget, and she will hand it out to each of you as we go through it. Oh, I'm supposed to ask you? Mayor, please, may we? Okay. And that's better. While Bridget is handing these out, I'll just say that I could talk with you all evening about the findings of this report, but my Chair has admonished me that I have only a short time. So I'll review just a few objects, the good work completed, work that's slated for conservation, certain problem areas and matters for this commission to grapple with and decide in this upcoming year. The good news is that there are no works that are in imminent danger of irreversible damage or hazards to persons or property. The bad news is that years of deferred maintenance has taken a toll on the collection as a whole. So I'm going to jump right in with our slide presentation to discuss the good and also the not-so-good. The first matter before us is the Trimpin Sound Arch, which, as you know, is at the entry to Libby Bowl. The artist is Trimpin, one name, like Cher, like Bono, like Madonna. And he is no slouch. He is the recipient of a MacArthur Fellowship, the Genius Grant. He was a longtime professor at MIT. And I believe that this is the only work in our collection that is not of a regional nature, but rather one of an artist of international stature. This work was conserved on August 20th, so just mere few weeks ago. And rather than tell you about it myself, we have a short video, which is an interview Smitty conducted with Camilla Corbella, our contract conservator. Camilla is more articulate than I could ever be in describing this work, the work that was performed, the qualifications of her team, and so on. And I think you and the community will enjoy a sense of what's necessary to conserve an important work. So with that, we'll go right to the slide. I mean, the video of Camilla. There we go.
So my name is Camilla Corbella, and I am the owner and principal conservator of LA Art Labs. So we're a Los Angeles-based conservation studio that focuses on art conservation, sculptures and paintings. And we have done a very comprehensive assessment of the collection, the civic collection of art in the city of Ojai. How we got to do that was through Lysa Shapiro and her company, Kira Art. So Lysa is an OG Ojai girl who grew up here with her family, and she has a really wonderful family that I also feel very connected to. And so she brought me on with the team at LA Art Labs to first assess the whole art collection that the city has, which is incredible in depth and diversity. And so once we assessed every single piece and we basically came out here together to look at every single one, assess the condition, see what else like could be improved, what kind of treatments are necessary, what would be a wish list in terms of better care and protection artworks that are scattered around the city and make the city so much more special and beautiful. And so now we embarked onto one first phase in terms of treatment, and it's basically the care of the Sound Arch. It's special because it was particularly conceived for this park. Yeah, what I think is wonderful also to begin with is that it's interactive and that it actually works with the people that are visiting the park or that are going to enjoy a concert at the Bowl. And so, you know, like art generally speaking is wonderful when it's interactive and like the public can be involved accordingly. It makes everything much more special. It's like a little bit of magic. The piece itself, it has a couple of issues that can be very well remedied through maintenance. And we'll have to also, based on our initial cleaning, inspect all the surfaces on a closer level in order to then see what else we have to actually do and basically build a like two-to-five-year plan for the artwork in order to anticipate if any other repairs are needed. So we have different composite materials that the arc is composed of. And we have concrete that has its own kind of like degradation phenomena, which is like through wear, because it's an outdoor sculpture. Everything is being weathered. And there are a couple of cracks and chips that will be stabilized after the initial cleaning and then also compensated for loss so that it like is, you know, more wholesome and doesn't like draw the eye to where any defects currently are. And then the metal will be considered after the cleaning with also very thorough inspection. Any areas of corrosion, which is very normal at this stage for an outdoor sculpture, will also be treated. The corrosion byproducts will be removed and then the area passivated so no new corrosion will occur and then isolated in terms of like protecting the surface that had been aggregated before just by weathering. And, you know, then there are like bird droppings, spider nests, and like other debris that also just like crack down the material. So we remove everything in order to also then add to the long-term preservation of the piece. We have a couple of people on the team today. And there is Ruth. Ruth actually has a PhD in Contemporary Art Conservation. She is our senior conservator and is obviously incredibly smart and talented. Then we have Malika. Malika, she is, she just graduated a while back, and she has been on the team for a couple of months already and has been already like jumping into all different projects. She's interested in a career in conservation. Lisa is a newer member of the team. And I really wanted her to come because it's like such a special experience. Also, working with public art is very different than the projects that she has been exposed to before. And she will also enter the path, the academic path of becoming a conservator. She, Clarice, Clarice, who just like bundled up because it's hot in the sun. She's an artist, and so she's in a supportive role, and she has been with us now for a longer time, actually, and is very sympathetic towards like materials because she has a very involved practice. Eric, he's currently taking a break. He's just like helping also in the capacity of an assistant and facilitator. So he will take over very particular parts of the cleaning, which will also include some very light, gentle pressure washing. It sounds like more pressure than actually will be executed. We have a very eclectic client portfolio, and that's really wonderful because that means that also the projects that we're entrusted with are very varied in scope and also what the desired outcome is. So we do a lot of public projects also in Los Angeles. We have museums under contract, so we do regular maintenance, but then also special projects. And we are currently very, very involved with particularly the Broad Museum, where I oversee the physical well-being of each painting that is in their collection. But then also, we are focusing a lot on preparing the inaugural exhibition for George Lucas Museum, which is supposed to open next year. And we're currently having over 20 projects in the pipeline. And we have, I think, completed around 200 thus far for the museum opening. But then we also have a lot of private clients that have museum-grade collections or private clients that, you know, just really care about their art. And then the other main component of the business, unfortunately, has developed emergency response. So in the aftermath of the California fires, we're heavily involved with helping our clients resurrect their collections from, you know, the fire areas. Like everybody here also, like, you know, is involved in academia or like outreach in one degree or another or like in the capacity of like together. We're now working on a paper for the American Institute of Conservation about, for instance, our disaster recovery efforts. But then also, I teach, for instance, conservation in various capacities, and I go once a year to Asia to teach conservation there. And that is enabled by the Fund for Cultural Development, sponsored by the US. So that's really wonderful. Anybody who engages in conservation, unlike the active level, really, really loves it and believes in how important it is to preserve our collective memory and make society better for our endeavors. There is something about caring for public artworks that is so important because it's actually art that is really needed, where we can all not just benefit from it, but also a point of conversation, if like a gathering point. It has so many different functions that are so important. And so our endeavors in terms of spending our time to help preserve that is of such utmost importance, and it makes our work so much more meaningful in the end. And yeah, we're just grateful to be part of this. Also, Ojai, the city, taking, you know, their stewardship, so important with preserving the collection that they have, which is so beautiful. And yeah, just honored to be a part of this and grateful for the inclusion.
Thank you. And thank you, Smitty, for having conducted that interview. I hope this gives you a sense, Council, of how well your money is spent. We have PhDs who are engaged in this process. We have professors. You could see it was five or six people that were part of this very experienced team. And this is just one work, although it's such an important work. Next is local artist Ted Gall's Big Red Roller. This work is on page 15 of your conservation report, which Bridget earlier handed out. Here, there are many issues. There's pitting, there's fading, there's corrosion, there's graffiti, et cetera. The conservators, in fact, recommended that we consider moving it, given its potential for graffiti and high touch. But, you know, the wheel relates to the skate park in such a way that it would be lost elsewhere. And in fact, certainly in my view, the public interaction is a testament to its popularity and its value and that recognition of public art, quoi public. This one is going to be expensive because unfortunately, there were years and years of deferred maintenance. We will be coming back to you with a budget item to address this soon, I think. I've spoken with the artist about this. He does want to approve the precise color, but does not want to undertake the conservation himself. Oh, and by the way, I had a conversation also with Trimpin in advance of Camilla's conservation. And he also, once I explained who they were, was fully confident that they would do a fine job, and he did not want to undertake that. So Ted Gall wants to approve the color and wants Camilla and her group to go ahead. And I've informed them that this likely is the next item on our wish list, depending on what we vote for and what money you allow us to go forward with. I do want to give a big thank you to the Public Works Department because they moved a trash can this summer that had been plopped down right in the middle of the sightline of Big Red Roller. And so that trash can is gone, and I'm happy that that is the case. Next on our list, there you get some sense of the pitting. Yeah, thank you for that, okay. Next is another work by Ted Gall. You no doubt recognize this Corten Steel Horse. This work is in pretty good shape. It needs a little bit of cleaning, but it's going to be very manageable to do so. And by the way, I should take a moment now to say that there are some works where the maintenance obligation is on the city and other works where the obligation is on the building owner because it had been commissioned pursuant to the percent-for-art program, and that requires the building owner's attention. Next, we have two works by Paul Lindhart that are on, as you know, opposite ends of Clough Vista Park. The conservation report notes that these are in stable condition, but that there is a crack that should be examined. This is a responsibility of the city. We should probably get to looking at that, although it's noted again that it's in stable condition, so we have no worry of harm to persons or property. Next, in our presentation, will be three works by the artist Douglas Lochner. This one, which is near the Business Center, is in fine shape. It could use a little dusting and cleaning, but it's good. The next one is his work called Fun for All at the Playground. It's noted there that there is some cracking, but that the sculpture appears stable for use by children. But no doubt, we, the city, it's the city's responsibility should address at some point that cracking. But again, I emphasize that it is stable and safe. The next work presents real problems that this commission is going to have to grapple with in this upcoming year. This work is called Reflections of Ojai. It's 2007. Shortly after it was installed, the building owner sandblasted the entire building, including the work itself. So the work the conservators correctly note is a total loss. Looking back at the fact that it's 2007... Looking back at the fact that it's 2007 and that it is still on display and still installed, what we know is that the building owner was at fault for, for doing that and then not taking any action. Frankly, the artist is at fault because the artist enjoys rights under both California and federal law, rights of attribution and integrity, but has not formally notified the city to exercise those rights. And of course, the city is wrong because it has, knowing of this condition, has allowed it to continue. So that's going to be, we're going to tee that up very soon for this commission to decide how we handle this work that's been on display for 18 years, but, but, uh, has real problems. This is at, oh, sorry, it's at Bryant Park. It's one of those, those large buildings at Bryant Park. And these, uh, individual 10 brass panels are on the piers of that building.
And it's a different owner now, I understand.
Yeah, it's a different owner. The address is 420 and, and we'll, we'll get to the resolution. We're going to need assistance from the city because we have no power to, to do things. So Ben will be coming to you for suggestions about how to address these matters.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, Matilaha Poppy Fountain. No doubt you know that work. The conservators note that there's corrosion on the brass. This is a, uh, an artist, Sandra Johnson, who is a, uh, I believe is or, or was a, um, Paso Robles artist. So we're going to have to decide how that's handled. Again, maintenance is City of Ojai. Again, no, no danger, no worry with that. But, but the sooner you address corrosion, the, the better it is for the piece itself. Next is another work at Bryant Park. This is called The Business of Bees. And this work, uh, the conservators note is in poor condition. Uh, the building owner is obligated, uh, under the maintenance agreement. And it's another matter we will be addressing. That one, by the way, is, um, specifically addressed on pages five, six, and seven of your conservation report. So they gave it a great deal of attention. I'm sort of racing through this. There are many other works I'd love to talk with you about, but I think, given our short time, we can just do these. Next is the beloved Early Bird Shopper by the beloved Ojai artist Sylvia Rozz. And the conservators note that there are certain problems here. Um, the, the bronze surfaces have some pitting and other damages. There's color issues, there's cleaning, et cetera. Um, that's, uh, a City of Ojai responsibility. And the work is, is stable, but it should be addressed. Next, uh, this, and may I see the next slide also, please? Okay, then, then we can jump back to the earlier slide. So, uh, thank you. These are works at the inn. Uh, the, the lower portion is a, a table, uh, and the upper is three, uh, sort of, um, um, bronze, I believe it's bronze, uh, animals of which there should be, uh, seven or, seven or, I, I think it's eight. The problem here is that public art, when commissioned, has to, has two prerequisites. First, it has to be visible from the nearest public right of way, which obviously was waived by an earlier commission for the fact that it's at the inn. And secondly, it has to be available to the public. And it, it's that prong that is of real concern to me because our conservators sought to, or our assess, our conservator assessors, uh, sought to view these works three separate times. Two times she was turned away and the third time she was walked through the property by an employee. Uh, and by the way, they could only find three of the eight works. So we, we will address that. We've got a good relationship with the inn and they, they, uh, as Smitty noted, held an, an event that was quite a success for the arts entities in town. And, and they are good public art citizens and we trust that they will do the right thing. Now I'm going to close on a bit of a nuisance, which is our friend Elliot the Bear. So Elliot the Bear seems to be in overall good condition. However, the shops that are in the area seem to send their merchandise out into that plaza to such an extent that Elliot the Bear seems to get, um, uh, suffocated by, by goods and merchandise. So that is an enforcement problem that, that the city, I think, is aware of. There are so many other issues that relate to the, 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 how we beautify our city. And if the purpose of public art is to beautify, elucidate, educate, and delight, certainly those, um, um, purposes are, are, are being eroded by, uh, by those sorts of actions. And, and that concludes my talk. And if anyone has questions, I'd love to talk and talk about public art.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you for that. Shall we proceed then to the second part or is, yeah, any comments? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you for that. That was actually fantastic and this pack gets fantastic. So I guess what I'd love to do now is before we move into the discussion items that have been proposed here is ask Mr. Montgomery if there's anybody online for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no in-house cards received, but we do have two participants on Zoom. So let's take our obligation seriously for our hybrid format. Zoom participants, we are taking public comment at our special meeting for our one noticed item on our special meeting agenda. Give you a moment to raise your hand if needed. And we can move on, Mayor.
Thank you. So as I'm reading it, the first item I'm looking at under discussion is integration with the city's general plan. Do you want to say a few words about that? Oh, and say what you need to say, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we're a little bit unique and this is where we wanted just maybe some council discussion in, in that we, um, uh, this is a commission that kind of has a plan and, uh, is developed, you know, with the public in mind and, um, uh, at the direction of council. But we're, we've been operating under the liaison model in terms of our relationship with staff and, uh, as, as the other commissions do as, as well. Uh, and with, and you know, since I've been on the commission, there's been three managers, seven liaisons, you know? And I mean, think about it, and there's been like the new council too. You know, in some ways your commissioners, your good commissioners in this city are, have the longest tenure of any of the constituents here too. So, uh, my, my volunteers take this very seriously and our plan very seriously. And, and, uh, I've gotten their, um, kind of, uh, buy-in that, hey, we can make government help the creative economy here in this town. So this is worth some of your time here, um, to try to make that happen. Because all these people can, including myself, can do this other ways, you know, just privately as well and as most, most art organizations choose to do. So we're looking, and when we look at best practices in other cities, uh, a larger city would have a staff member who was the arts, you know, director or responsible for coordinating and making sure that the plan is being implemented, you know? So, uh, we don't have that here. And so we're, we're, a lot of times we, we feel like we're bugging the city or bugging the council when indeed we see our responsibility is to the council as establishing this plan, this five-year plan. Uh, but, um, the implementing it, uh, feels like every little step is, uh, uh, we're bothering somebody, you know, rather than... And so I, I think I labeled this, integrate it with the master plan or something like that. As I'm trying to see, get your ideas, is if this becomes as important as a pothole to somebody, then it will get done and, and it, it won't, um, it, it, it might work better than a liaison model.
That's really helpful. What I was thinking about that I would love to hear from everyone here is, um, there's a lot of activity that's happening right now related both in the council and outside of the council on understanding our general plan and trying to understand our economy from different factors. And so even yesterday, there was a, a meeting with the Women's Fund around a needs assessment for nonprofits. And I was thinking of our meeting that we're going to have here today. And, and so I guess part of what I'm thinking about in the integration of what does the creative economy do for Ojai in a way that we can quantify in a way that's never been quantified before is as we work, in fact, what's going to come up soon in our regular meeting will be looking at diversifying the, our economy. That's one of the issues, uh, that we have a very explicit part of. What does the creative economy look like for us and how? I don't begin, I don't know how to do that yet, but it would be exploring that question. So it'd be, how could we figure out what are the creative endeavors that contribute to our economy in a way that we can make, that makes sense? That then would then justify what's the right kind of budget for the city to spend? That, that's what I was thinking, but please, Ms. Lang.
Yeah, I had something along those same lines. First of all, we are doing so much with you, as you probably know, we're doing so much with our general plan right now. In fact, later on today, we have an agenda item about this that I won't talk about at this moment. But one of the things that we are doing with our general plan is that we are working with a consultant to do an economic diversification, uh, I guess, in a, a, a study on that, that we can incorporate into our general plan. And we also have a climate action plan that, that we're doing. And so I think there would be an opportunity to, I mean, if that does move forward, we will be directing our consultants to look at all, at specific things that we, that we want them to consider when developing that plan. And, I mean, we've talked, uh, we went, you know, I went to, with you to that, that meeting. And I, I think the, uh, that there's so much potential with the, with working with the county, with focusing on the creative economy. And so I, I, I think that, that there will be an opportunity for us to weave some of your goals and your strategies in with what we're already doing. Instead of having it being a separate arts, uh, addendum to that plan, to weave it into, to make it more of a includes, to make more of, uh, to include it in what we're already doing.
I agree with that. Yeah, please.
If I may, how, how would one do that? I mean, I understand that integrating the arts into everything would be quite appealing. But our frustration, and I think that was Smitty's point, is that most jurisdictions, large and small, have cultural affairs departments or at least some people who are saying art, culture. And so to, to say we want it to be a part of everything is, uh, it sounds great. But I, I, I fear that the grandiosity of it means that it's going to get lost. If, if I can give one very small example from the video, what we saw were very good jobs. And so our contract conservators could train someone within Public Works or Public Works could hire someone to go around and do the kind of work that our contract people schlep up from Los Angeles to do. These are good paying jobs, real jobs, and a way to actually integrate art into everything else that's being done. So I'm not questioning your statement. I'm just wondering how we make that happen.
I think that's a really interesting idea, to say that an employee here does that work that we're contracting out for anyway. That's a great idea. I, I guess just to tag on to what you just said, I was thinking if we could quantify all of the, the economic activity that happens. Now, of course, there's all kinds of other benefits, but that relate to music, visual arts, dance, all of those things to say, this is the kind of aspect of our economy that we're paying attention to, which I think is going to be much bigger. Well, maybe somebody knows it. I don't feel like I know it well to say it's this percentage or something like that. I would love to be able to know that. And then it, then it seems to me we, it becomes more interesting to say we're granting to the community. It sounds more like an investment than a grant when we think about it like that for that, the health of our community in general. Please.
That's, that's, you, you're speaking to exactly what I was trying to get at with. This, this could be a part of that strategy that we're, the plan that we're working on with the, with the, uh, the contractors.
Yes, please. And then we'll go to Mr. Whitman.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to mention that the, the county, I might have mentioned this to some of you, is undergoing a, uh, impact statement of what is the creative economy in Ventura County. And I've seen a draft of, of one of the early drafts and it was very interesting. They're using the same consulting firm that was used in Los Angeles. LA County came up with a number like eight, okay? The national average of the impact of the arts in a community in the United States is four and a half percent of GDP or whatever, you know, number that you're measuring. In Los Angeles County, it might not surprise you that it's eight and a half percent with it, with your, you know? They're going to find in Ventura County, the number is going to be below the national average, okay? We, we have a lot of small cities and rural cities and that sort of thing. So what's Ojai's number? What would the Ojai Valley's number be?
I would hope it's higher.
We would hope it would be maybe even higher than Los, but we don't know that. And so that's why our, maybe our second is, or part of this discussion item was to piggyback on what the county has done to try to put a handle on that. So it isn't just making things pretty and good for artists. It's, it becomes a, a clean, positive job creating, good job creating, no traffic creating, you know, um, uh, part of the master plan.
No, thank you. Mr. Whitman, please.
Yeah, so mechanically, we've been working on a general plan since I joined the city council. And I think it was, you know, it had been begun before that point in time. And my, my general understanding is that it has elements, the general plan has elements. And, um, they'll have drafts printed of each element. And then there'll be a period of time for comment in addition to what's in the draft. And so I think there's an opportunity for the Arts Commission, um, to take each and every element, if, if you have an interest in it, look at it and give us comments and recommendations about what we should be, um, you know, considering for addition in the general plan. Certainly the economic piece, uh, is going to have those, you know, things we're talking about with the artist community, um, creative, uh, community. But, you know, the land use element potentially, um, has some potential for that as, you know, for, for there to be relevance. I, I don't know what all the elements are actually, having never gone through this before. But we're essentially going to be adopting a whole new plan. And I think, um, I agree with Councilmember Lang that, you know, it's not so much of like creating a place for the arts, but interweaving the arts in each of the elements of the plan. Is the way I would see, I, I mean, that's the way I would answer your question. That's, that's the way it, it's logical to me.
Ms. Wright, were you going to say something just, oh, sorry, okay. Oh, yes, Ms. Ruhl. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was just going to sort of note that, um, I do think that the Economic Action Plan is the perfect place for this really. And it is, it is one of our goals for diversifying the economy. It seems to me that it would be very targeted and would speak exactly to, um, you know, the creative economy. That's not to say that it, it, it doesn't make sense for you to give comments on all of the elements of the general plan. But honestly, and you know, if you want to get lost, start commenting on the general plan in my, my experience. So I would say really target it and work with us on the Economic Action Plan because I, I think all of us feel there is a creative economy and we can have it from start to finish. We can have an apprentice program. You know, we're speaking now, uh, Councilmember Mang and I about putting, uh, students on each of the commissions and seeing, you know, how they can be mentored and sort of brought into a working situation for them. So, um, I mean, that's where I see the natural, the natural fit. And I would, I would head to that, I would head there in the diversifying the economy idea.
Thanks, yes.
One thing too, I just wanted to mention, and we're going to talk about goals and priorities this evening too, is that actually, uh, you'll, I think you'll be pleased to hear that one of our goals that, one of the, the goals that we have for arts, culture, and recreation funding is to consider an Ojai cultural contribution. And so while the general plan might be further out, this is something that we could do more, uh, more immediate. And so what we mentioned was dedicating a portion of the TOT to nonprofit applicants influencing the arts, culture, and recreation. So, so, so looking at it more from a budgetary perspective first. And then, and then, you know, as we're developing these components of the general plan, see where we can, where there, where, maybe, maybe our consultants have suggestions for how we could, we could do that.
Two things occurred to me, one is, I would encourage everybody, if you come across an idea that another city is doing, don't hesitate, capture it, send it our way, because I keep learning things all the time that other cities are up to in terms of like, artist residency program, or incubator program, or whatever, and it gets really exciting to think, oh, we could actually help bring about something that we would like to do. And I just don't know what I don't know, you know, so that's one. The second is, we've been talking about a survey, and we keep thinking about different needs for this survey that we might end up doing, but it's asking questions that typically the census may not ask, like, do you work from home? Is this your second home, things like that? But the more I think about this, and I think of nonprofits that also want to help contribute to this survey financially and in content, this seems like a great opportunity to ask questions like this. Are you part of the creative economy? How do you do that? A lot of us, art is a side gig, you know, so it, it's, but it'd be something that'd be really interesting to know about.
I will say also, if I could, that I've spoken to the Director of the, the Chamber of Commerce. And she's also very interested in making art part of the Chamber of Commerce and actually supporting artists who might need the Chamber's help. You know, to be able to actually expand their artistic, you know, their livelihood. And, and so that seems to me, when you're talking about a creative economy, you're, you are really tied into also, you know, the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, please, go.
Just a little more fertilizer on that, and some best practices. I remember when, when the homeless community, what do we call it?
The tent town?
Yeah, our tent town. I think we got a grant for that or something at some point. And they're very common grants these days, and large grants for cities all across the country right now. And, and many in the more progressive art communities have, you know, automatically put a, you know, eight percent or a ten percent or some number in there of something that will be part of the creative economy in there. Some, and it's beyond having murals on the side of the wall and that sort of thing, it could be, it could be a, it could be a workshop where there's paints and easels and, and classes, you know, and, and, or in even a store where, where the residents who create art, you know, you know, spread, you know, spread the message, not just beauty, but, you know, the enterprise of, of what the creative economy. So just to give you an idea, because the idea may be that with the city, and all my point, the three things I want to talk about are all coming together here, so. If we can look at, I like to, you know, my little expression is, I forget the question, but art is the answer, all right? If, and if, so if art, we already make our developers, with any commercial development, pony up two percent, okay? Just to beautify for public art, all right, we already do that.
One, it's really one percent.
Two percent of the first million to one percent after that is, is how the number works, you know. But what if every project that the city government did, or anything the city did, you know, had a, had a number on it? Cities exempt from that by law, but, you know, but, but it's kind of practicing what you preach, because in there, there will be a creative way to use the creative economy to, to accomplish a lot of things. And it, and it's politically, it's beautifully unifying as well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, because I did want to give a nod and a thank you, because of the grants increase this year, so we're giving a hundred thousand dollars back to the community. Fairly selected, so it's actually, you know, hopefully stimulating this creative economy and bringing more to occur. But the big talk in government now with the, with grants programs, arts grants programs, is, is this very, very nature, it fits well with government in that you apply, you get it, it's budgeted, you apply here, and then you get the money, you gotta spend it by the next year. So it fits really nicely into our little bureaucratic drawers for government and all too. But it ends up that really what you're doing is responding and being reactive to hands that are out, you know? What if the wrong hands are out, or what if the good hands don't come out? And then we talked before how some people do it on their own. So there's a lot of talk now, and I'd like you guys to give some creative thought to. How do you implement a plan and budget for it when you're, where your main investment though is grants, you know? There's maybe a better way, or a third way, you know? That makes it part of the investment from the very beginning.
You said that before, that's really smart. Yes, please.
Kind of melded some of the bullet points with the staff support beyond the current staff liaison model. I think, you know, my understanding of the history of that issue, it's largely coming out of the Historic Preservation Commission. And they made the same request. I think it was probably right before I joined City Council. But they were told that the, the money isn't there to do that. And then I think during my time, there was a discussion about them increasing their number from five to seven. And their main desire was that each one of those additional commissioners was going to be somebody who was going to push the ball forward on getting things done. I know that I want more staff time for, you know, for the information that the City Council needs. And so there, you know, what we're going to find out is that there's just a lot of demand for staff and not a lot of staff. And probably, you know, gets into our budgeting discussions on a very, you know, broader sense. But I did want to bring up the idea that the Historic Preservation Commission came up with.
Yeah, and, and just really briefly, Councilmember Whitman, the Historic Preservation Commission took kit, to Councilmember Mang and I are still bringing that up. As of our last meeting three weeks ago. So we're still struggling with that issue, and that's, seems to be, you know, sort of a city hall issue that we need to address, one way or the other.
Yeah, so this is kind of a tangent with that. And that is that, you know, if you, if you look structurally at what the planning, or what the heart, each of the commission does, including the Arts Commission. It's to, you know, assess and make recommendations to the City Council. And the sky's kind of the limits on what you can do within the art world, this, to look at an issue and then make a recommendation to us. Now, you know, whether we have the wherewithal, you know, the will to implement it. But I think as Mayor Gilman said earlier, you know, the sky's the limit on what we'll listen to and give a fair hearing to and, and decide, okay, this is in the best interests of our community or not.
Ms. Wright. Yeah, yeah, you're doing it, please.
I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Whitman a little bit. The, the link between the staff and the Arts Commission, it has nothing to do with the Arts Commission needing more people on the commission to get its job done. It's, we can't do our job without that interface from the city. And that was, that's, that is the issue, and we're limited by the amount of hours. And respectfully, we try to adhere to that, but that means that we're moving at a pace that is in sync with the amount of time the city can respond to it. We, we are limited, like yourselves, we can't go into websites and change them, we can't send out press releases, all the things that we can't do. So we have said at our meetings before, let us do more. You know, what can we do to take the load off of the city as well? So there's that to think about, you know? Letting us have more access to procedural things, so just.
Just to support what you're saying, that, it seems to me there is a structural difference. Let's say, for example, in Parks and Rec, you have the Parks and Rec Director attending that meeting, and same with the Planning Commission and Historic Preservation, where you have people in the Planning Department. But we don't have an Arts Department, right, so I get that. I did, this, this is related. When I was on the Arts Commission, there was something that I wanted to do very much, which was implement a website where anybody could go and look at all of the arts and culture events that were happening in the city. And I, I really wish I could have done that, but I, I guess what I thought is, Ben doesn't know I'm going to say this, but i- if we could figure out, oh, this is, we, this is, this has been a need since like twenty years ago. That a place, everybody goes to say, oh, here's when the art shows are going to be, here's the plays, here's this, that it's community driven, it doesn't cost money to put your events on there, but then all of a sudden you have this resource. Now again, this has to be figured out, I'm not trying to say let's get a person, but what I am trying to say is, you could have a person now that's deeply involved in these things, that actually could be a technical resource, possibly. Mr. Harvey, please.
I just want to remind you, we, you and I actually have a meeting
We do.
With the software solution for at least the calendaring component of that.
That's right.
So, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, especially with technology, it could be much easier than it used to be, please, and then we'll, we'll go around.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what we're talking around and what we see all the time is the interface of money, or primarily money, and priorities. And I'm very encouraged about earmarking a percentage of the TOT expressly for cultural related projects, I think that's hugely important. I think another area is to examine and perhaps change the funding formula for public art, because it is significantly depressed relative to other projects in other cities, where, for example, it's one percent, or in some cases more of the actual permit costs or construction costs rather than our artificial matrix. So there are quite a number of ways, I think, we can look to other jurisdictions to, to tweak that, and by doing so, to get that money so we can identify those priorities.
Thank you. Were you going to say something? Oh, no, great, and then we'll go around. Okay, Pam, go.
Well, I was going to say the website that you described that you wanted to do when I was on the Arts Commission in 2014, that's what we were working on, and here we are, 2025, and it hasn't happened, and I was working on it back then. And it's so frustrating. I mean, it's so frustrating because that should be something, if you, if you asked me to do it for you, I would have it done this week. You know, it's, it's like, let's get it done.
Just to be fair, it gets so complicated, because then you decide what goes on there, who puts it on there, who manages it? It's easy to say, let's put it up, but then you realize it's something that's ongoing. Well, I face the same thing, and if you gave, if I had a week, I would do it too. But it's complicated, but finish your thought.
Okay, well, I just, it just frustrates.
I get you, me too.
I think I completely acknowledge your frustration. I think that in the last year and a half or so, our, you know, dexterity with the, with the website has improved significantly. We are getting better at communicating through our website. And you know, going back to the, you know, the staff issue, I think we probably need, you know, a report from the city manager in terms of, you know, how do we do a better job of communicating what the Arts Commission would like to get done? And, you know, and how does that get into our hands?
Mr. Harvey, yeah. So I, I could, I could jump in there, and that would be, I think, okay, we want to take a couple steps back that I think are important for this discussion. Communication's really important, that the city communicates with one voice. And so that's why I oversee the communication side of the house, and I probably will never delegate that because of the sensitivity of a lot of the things that we end up talking about. It's just really essential that I'm involved, even in our social media posts, it just is the way it has to be. However, we, your city staff are going to be having a strategic communication discussion with our provider, who is Truppi Smith, or a contract outfit, next week. One of the things I want to bring up is, kind of in this vein, we could be getting recommendations from various commissions for components that they would like to have communicated, things that are being left out, things that are important, and we could build that in. We could absolutely do that, and, and that would be very healthy and, and, you know, I think that would be reflective of all the good work that we're doing, because that is part of what we're trying to show the community is all the stuff that's going on out there that you're doing, that other commissions are doing, that the council's doing, and that your staff is doing. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, then, so with that meeting with them, are, have you invited like the heads of each commission for their input so we can work together?
No, this is just, this is preliminary, but what I was envisioning was, you know, we haven't, we've never done this before. So starting, you know, just with staff and the consultant, then talking about the bigger, broader things and how to address them, I could see something, Councilmember, like what you're talking about, coming from that.
I think would be so helpful.
Yeah, but we, we haven't even, we've never done this. And so we need to start with first, like, okay, let's, let's identify the breadbox, and then we can go out and.
So could it be helpful then if each commission created their list to share with us, to share so when that time comes, to give us some kind of a frame?
Yeah, what I was envisioning was having each staff liaison go to their respective commissions and basically say, hey, we had this discussion, these are the types of things we're looking to get from you, we'd like to tell your good story, we'd like to work with you on that, something like that. But I want to also hear from the pros so they can, I'm sure there's something I'm going to leave out.
Sure.
That they'll, that they'll remind me of.
That's correct, yeah.
I was going to say, just for, just to imagine, what if one of the Arts Committees, their only job was to collect, they would be the hub for all art things going on in the city? And everyone would respond, like, if everyone was emailing me their dates and time, and once a month, I fed it to you, the post.
Sure, yeah, we, and, and so this again, kind of loosely circles back to this software tool that the mayor and I are going to be looking at. We are looking at a tool that could host and, and spread everything, but yeah, something like that would be good. I think as long as we're staying in the swim lane, where, you know, it's, it's a recommendation coming to, to, to me or someone on my team, absolutely, we, we could definitely do that.
Because, I mean, that's what we're missing, is a hub where people can, if, if the city was a hub, that we knew what was going on.
I can tell you, when I did the Ojai Hub years ago, it took almost an entire day to put events. An entire day of my, and I'm pretty good at it. So I mean, it, we're not talking about a small thing.
This software tool will be very helpful for us.
Yeah, but Chair West, were you avoiding?
Okay. Thank you, I, Mayor Andy warned me, you guys like little detailed things too, so I'm going to, I'm going to back it back up. Okay, if you don't mind, because that's where I see the value here, that we have this time with council, okay? We don't see, like, here's this Arts Commission over here, what are they doing? I think in the last few years, I got viewed, you're looking, what do they do? I don't know, let's go see, you know? I mean, you guys are the council, you are the elected representatives of the people, and we serve you, okay? At some point, and I gave a little history earlier, you said, oh, we need experts, because we don't know Pink from Rosetta or whatever, and, and put an Arts Commission together. And, and as part of the statute, it was to advise on all things art in, in the community. So I don't want this to be seen as a commission issue, you know what I mean? I want this to be seen as the creative economy, as the arts in our community, and I want that to be part of this, of your mission, all right? So if you already have it baked in, you know, to when, you know, if you're going to fill a pothole, you know, you're going to be buying the stuff and have a guy with a shovel and all that too, you know? We are going to fill potholes, you'll make sure that, I mean, Ben, we'll make sure that that gets done. If we can make this art type stuff, rather than a bunch of good ideas, and how do we do them? And coming to you, oh, can we have a website or something? It's already baked into what you're doing, so that when you go to staff at the end of the year for their performance review, it will be, oh, did we achieve these things in our arts plan? You know, it's not the Arts Commission doing that, you know, and it doesn't have to be our money, you know, and it doesn't have to be our grants, you know? We're there to serve the council for what you guys need. And so my beg is make art what you need, because I think it is.
I think we're on the same page with you.
And I was, I mean, it really comes down to, what's different about the Arts Commission is really that we are discussing the creative economy. I mean, we're looking beyond the Arts Commission and how, but we're looking towards how to integrate it into all that Ojai does and make it an economic engine for Ojai. And I think that that takes it out of the realm of the commission world and into the realm of how is the city moving forward to? and into the realm of how is the city moving forward to diversify its economy? Which is a high priority. And I think in that way, Smitty, what you're saying is it would get baked in and it could get baked in. And it wouldn't be the commission, it would be what the city is doing. And with advice and, you know, sort of guidance and recommendations from the arts commission on how that creative economy um is working or can work or, you know, what the what the flow is for it. That's, that's kind of how I see it. So it it does tie into your idea of, you know, bringing it back to the city, bringing it back to a larger goal for the city of Ojai and attempting to make, you know, the econ, the art world part of our economic engine, which it certainly can be with a little bit uh with work.
No, thanks. Well said.
Sinking in.
No, I I will, I think we're all more or less in agreement with what you're saying. We we recognize that basically, safety, environmentalism, um, our economy is something we're all thinking about, and we know it's all connected. Right? So we, I think we get that pretty well.
I think, uh, just an idea that you could consider as a commission, uh, looking, taking five or ten minutes at your meetings to look at what's on our agenda, maybe get uh Ben's, um, you know, work plan where he's extended out and and if you see an issue where ah, you should be thinking about arts on this one because we might not be.
Oh, that's a great point.
Then, you know, then then uh pursue it further to say, hey.
Yeah.
Hey, you have an arts opportunity here.
That's a great example.
You're right.
No, that's really, really good.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if it, there is so much work that we're gonna be doing around not only the general plan, but looking at diversification. I think we're all hearing, we're gonna include this conversation into that. So there's a lot of, I think, synergy around that work, so we'll include this. And I definitely wanna know much more detail on creative contribution. Yeah, that sounds really good. Yes, please go.
These commissioners you have here, please see them as more than either the arts commissioners and, you know. You guys are the sovereign though, because you are counsel, because you represent the people, you know, at the end of the day. So, and we work for you and we're experts. I wanna just kinda point out, you know, Christine's background is one of the most prominent art attorneys in the world, all right? Pamela Grau's not only tremendous artist, but she comes from an art family multi-generational that made vocation and uh from the arts and understands how better than anyone else I know, how the arts uh integrate into the full community deeply, you know, and pull the elements together. And she has lived that life and so so she knows that as well. Uh, Karina Wright uh has the professional background uh in in the Los Angeles art world and and beyond to understand the vocation of the kind of fine artists in the um, in the uh, in the marketplace out there. And and what they do as a career and how do they market their things. And so she has really practical knowledge. You know, David Leeds, you know, again, not just a great artist, but um, uh, a truly a a great communicator as well. And a wise man, and he has served in government as well and and things like. So these are people that are volunteering here. And I hope you can tell they're all not trying to like run for senator one day, you know what I mean? Would all these people, myself, I I, you know, musician and artist, you know, I I like to think that I was able to make a career out of it and learn a lot about it and with a scientific background, with a new twist to it as well. So all of us are kind of um, want to serve the community. And and like I say, and and if we feel like we are you know, that um, we'll keep doing it, you know? But if we feel like we're not, you know, we'll continue to try to serve the community, we'll just do it a different way. And I I don't mean that as a threat. I mean that as, wow, don't, we're here to be your 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 brainiacs on the arts.
We do value you.
So um, don't be afraid to ask because any of these individuals, I know you're just just, David beautified this room for you, you know, that wasn't an arts commission thing. But but he was so happy and the room looked so beautiful, you know, so.
I will say, Ms. Grau said something to me about a year and a half ago at the first World Dance Festival. We were down kind of at the front and it was packed, it was incredible. And I'm, if I remember what you said correctly, it was whatever Ojai's problems are, this is gonna heal it. I heard that loud and clear and I I I already believed that and I believe it even more now. That these kinds of events, this kind of arts and culture does make us in great shape. Ms. Wright, I wanted to ask you, um, with the increased grant, are you seeing, what are you seeing in terms of the grant applications? I know it's early days still.
It is early days and I I don't know if Bridget has received any
Okay.
completed yet, but we have gotten so many inquiries and just questions that Bridget chairs and collaborate on the answer together to get the facts out there. But many more questions.
Thank you. Were you gonna say something?
Karina uh gave me recently what I thought was a startling statistic, which is that the hundred thousand is such a significant difference and it can really make a difference in our community. However, it is less than half of what had been requested last year when the amount was was only thirty thousand and and so we can anticipate that we will still always be running to catch up.
Latin. Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have a question. Um, I know that uh, there's been some sort of uh discussion around um nurturing young sort of emerging artists with smaller grants as opposed to, you know, the festivals and, you know, the film festival, the dance, the um, you know, the the many festivals that we have that are a much bigger production. And I was wondering if you guys had thought about sort of earmarking a certain amount to emerging artists that, you know, haven't been given grants before so that we can have um, you know, sort of a farm team, a bench. We're 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 developing a bench of artists, uh, especially now that, you know, the amount's been, you know, it's it's uh, been been increased quite a bit. I was wondering how you're thinking about that as you go into um, you know, figuring out who you're going to recommend for the grants.
Ms. Wright, yeah.
We have um, been discussing this on and off at a couple of meetings. And the way that the grants are set up now is that they're available to individual artists and arts organizations. And so the individual artists are competing with the arts organizations for the same pool of money. That's an interesting idea, um earmarking money specifically for individual artists, putting their application outside of um, and making them autonomous in terms of uh the funds. I think that that is something we wanna tackle next year for the next grant cycle is sort of delineating, shoring up because last year, for instance, we had a small handful of individual artists who did apply for grants. None of them met the requirements of the grant application. So they were in essence disqualified. Even, you know, gave some uh extensions for missing fiscal sponsors and, you know, tried to work with them as best as we could, but um, we were not able to give any grants to individual artists, but the intent is to give money to individual artists and um, the emerging artists um paradigm is different. Um, and that that might be a class of its own because an emerging artist most likely wouldn't have the same criteria or meet the same criteria that we're asking for. Like, we want you to do something that's going to involve the community. Maybe it's, maybe the emerging artist grant is something completely different with a different set of criteria, I think, you know?
Right, right. And I think that 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 makes sense. And I know that the criteria, you know, for educational outreach, um, you know, the the reach that you're going to have or, you know, the the who, the demographic that you're going to reach, things like that. So I understand that the criteria, you know, might need to uh be be, you know, specific uh or to to an emerging artist or um, you know, to an individual artist. But most especially certainly to an emerging or um, you know, a young artist, building up, building up capability, you know?
For sure.
That's really a, a beautiful thing to do.
Thank you, yeah.
Uh, Smitty here. Um, absolutely. This is in our plan. Uh, you know, one of the things we haven't done yet, that that's one of the hundred and nineteen things. And to Karina's, thank you. Karina is um, on top of things in terms of what we can do and what we can't do, and we wanna appear fair, we wanna use best practices. We wanna use a rubric, we wanna use a score, we want everyone to realize it's just recommendations that we're making to council. The advice we're getting, in particular this year where we got a raise, we wanted to make sure that we did everything right, you know, and everything perfect. It made you guys proud, it made you dig deeper next year, you know that. So um, we really wanna do that well. And the best practices with government and arts grants is to use the old five oh one C three, state justice department, state taxation, because there's already these levels of of uh, of of weeding that have gone through an applicant uh to be able to do that. There there, that doesn't mean there's not a way to do it. And in some of the larger grants we see, they are able to do that. But that's gonna be another level of sort of administration and measurement and level. So we're doing the the one that most people do is you find a fiscal sponsor. So um, but to address your young people and and uh bringing new people along, that's falling kind of under under our education thing. And Pamela might wanna tell you how we're doing that.
Leslie, a couple of things to address what you brought up about emerging artists. My aunt, yes. Um, when we give a grant, and I'll use the Dance uh Festival as an example, that in, involved many, many, I mean, dozens of young dancers who performed in that festival. And they were emerging artists and they were being trained and they were being um exposed and it was a really big deal. Um, same thing with the Ojai Studio Artists. We have sixty artists. That impacts lots of younger artists as well, they mentor. Most of our festivals and the Taft Gardens, they do residencies for emerging artists. Um, and Carol and Glasgow Bailey Foundation. So when we fund these organizations here in town, they have their own process of supporting the artistic, the upcoming artistic community. Um, in addition to that, right now, we're working on a mentorship program of creating panels of professionals that will be talking to high school students and uh young, well, anyone actually can come to these. For example, we're gonna have a theater production panel and have professionals talking about the different fields that you can go into in the theater. Anyhow, but stay tuned.
Yeah, yeah.
We have lots of things going on.
That makes perfect, that makes perfect sense that these organizations that you do fund, part of their mission would certainly be to support and uh grow, you know, emerging artists. That makes absolute sense. So thank you for for pointing that out. Um, and we can think about, you know, the lone artist who's kind of.
It's hard to get a a grant when you're that, you know, like if I came to you and I said, can you fund me painting for six months?
Right.
I'm gonna fall short next to the Taft Gardens, you know, like they have.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and and there's, you know, there's other things that, um, you know, there's the Ojai playwrights.
Right.
Workshop, but there's also, you know, people who just really wanna have an opportunity to live with themselves and their creative impetus. And they may not know what that is yet. Anyway, it's just an idea. I know you guys are thinking about.
We we have so many, we have so many creative professionals here in town and so many free classes and so many things going on. I think focusing on the organizations that are out there spreading their wings and helping everyone rise up is our best practice.
I I think you may be right. Um, it it sounds like it's finding its way, which is really important.
Yeah, and I'd like to encourage you, council members, to, what we do when people come and say, oh, the Arts Commission should blah, 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 oh, the Arts Commission should blah, blah, and and they're great ideas, but but we like to respond is, you know what, you should apply for an arts grant to do blah, blah, blah. All right? And and that can be the language of council members when you're out in the community as well, as you know. Wonderful ideas. If you married that with something, artist and apply for a grant, you know, then you can do it. You don't have to bother the staff or something.
Smitty, I wanted to add, with Hades Town, how many kids were involved in that production?
Sixty.
It was amazing.
So sixty young kids had the time of their life and and reached all sorts of levels through, you know, I don't think you got a grant for that, but.
It was a really incredible show. Can I, I don't know if it's time to transition, but can we talk about it? Do you wanna talk about the mural in here in this building or is that, no, not right now. Okay. Nope, sounds good. What else? Okay.
Well, we've kinda brought them all together, you know, the uh, we talked about, the other ones that I had there were uh the actual study, you know, you guys get, I know you know when it's coming, I wanna wait till the county's done. Let's see. But, you know, we may, we may shock ourselves. I have no idea what the impact of the arts is. And and I was talking to some of you about what the uh impacts are. How about these artists who are famous out in the world and have beautified the world with their music or their public art in China or whatever they've done that live here because they love Ojai? But we don't think of them as contributing, you know, to the local economy, but aren't they? They're contributing to the world. You know, Ojai can contribute to the world with our people here that come here too. So this investment that we make goes beyond just Ojai as well. So uh, we'd like to try to get a better handle on this by, and I'm talking to county and L A and trying to see how we can best drill down because they're doing pretty broad brush stuff that's based on public data that's already out there and we might need to do some survey and and something like that. So I I don't, um, so that was the other topic. And the third one was uh, it was also an integration topic. Yeah.
It did seem like there was a lot of.
Yeah, I I, they all kinda came together.
That's good.
But I I think we've, we've done a good job.
Yes.
So the city is doing a survey.
Well, something that we have been talking about.
Okay.
Yes.
I know they've done them over the years. And so, and we did do a survey or we, we sent out a survey, Smitty, last year that was Ventura County.
County survey.
I don't know if we ever got the statistics.
We did, we got those results.
Okay, so.
What, to artists or to whom?
Uh, both, artists and um yeah, unfortunately, it came right after COVID and a lot of people weren't going out a lot. I remember seeing the results have been on too.
Yeah.
But people are, right, we we're forgetting some of the creative economy that, you know, when you think of an artist, you think of someone painting a painting, you know, but we gave a puppet making grant this year, you know what I mean? And that's actually useful in the world, you know? The the filmmakers, the um, the the sound effects people. Uh, I just worked on the Mary Shelley play. Half of the budget for the whole play was just for the new technological effects that they use. And these were like real guys making money and doing jobs and and it was locals paying for it and that sort of thing. So the creative economy is gonna go way beyond painters.
I just wanted to say that, you know, regardless of the results of these surveys, which are only as good as the people who are answering them, um, I think it's obvious, especially when I read about all these not-for-profits that are here in Ojai, um, what the contributions are of the creative economy. It it's, people, you know, O P A, all of these, they're they're bringing international, as we said, international artists here.
No doubt.
Yeah, and um, I'm I'm sure that this is, this is out there, but I'm not even sure what the mechanisms of a creative economy are. So theoretically, I understand it, um, no problem, and I I can tease it apart to a certain point. But the actual sort of mechanisms of a creative economy um is something that's uh eluding me right now. So perhaps, Smitty, you and I can have a talk or or.
Yeah, I will say real, I can answer quickly and say that in in larger towns or different towns, there's a art institute, there's a Getty, you know, there's a Smithsonian or something, or there's a university that may become the center for the arts. Or there may be a particular large uh, 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 a film designed studio or or a a movie. We don't have that in Ojai, but we probably have more professionals in the art world here per capita than those places that do have those things. Because we don't have a unit, we don't, you don't come to Ojai to work in the art factory. You know, you come here because it's a great place to live and it attracts some great artists too. So from the beginning, our our five-year plan strategy, we recognized that we had to become a hub and a spoke kind of model, and government can do. And government can do that, uh, private institutions could do it too. But we think our best chance with government is just this hub, we need to connect the people. We need a place where they gather and that's our vision of the art center, okay? And that could be technological place to gather too, online. And then we need to connect from that place out to the people. And they'll come, they will come because that's what they do.
And then go, and then you go.
We have that, when people come for the playwrights conference, when they come for, uh, the music festival, when they come from the Ojai Studio Artist Tour, when they come to the movie theater. I mean, we bring in people who are eating, they're shopping, they're staying in hotels here. Everyone who comes to Ojai for a creative experience of any kind, it adds to our economy.
For sure. I just wanted to break it out. And I think that's what partly is what Ms. Ruhl is saying is if you have a playwrights conference or you have a play or you have the music festival, you say, all of this revenue and interest and, and excitement, not only from tourists but from residents, happened from that. I would love to see that as a separate piece.
So, uh, thank you. Councilwoman Ruhl, I think your question hits the nail on the head in terms of what I've been concerned about. And that is, your question raises, how can we possibly do this if we quote, "integrate the arts into everything else," unquote? What does that look like? And I think most other jurisdictions have answered that question by saying, it looks like a cultural affairs department. Or it looks like a person who has that authority within the city government to make those kinds of art decisions. And I realize that we've kind of gone full circle, but I think your question is precisely that question we have to address. If we say art is a part of everything, then we continue to limp along as we have done for years. I mean, Andy's point that, what, twenty years ago, he sought to do something that couldn't be done because it was going to be done by, uh, volunteer people. So how do we do it? I think we do it with that kind of priority on the arts.
Yeah, and, and I see what, uh, Chair Smitty said about you need, you need a centralized place from which everything spreads out in some way or everything comes into, so that you really can, um, in some ways, just keep a sense of what is going on. So maybe it is an art center or, you know, I, I, I'm not sure. But I understand, uh, what you were saying about that and how that, how that would, um, solidify for sure, um, that idea.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that I think what, what your, what, uh, Vice Chair Steiner and Christine, what Christine and Smitty were talking about is that, you know, it's even more than just like including it, like perhaps it's not about just doing, including in the general plan, but perhaps it's, it's about bringing it up as a policy consideration of structuring, uh, a department or having a center. And if we had a city, a city art center, then that could house the department. So I, I think it is, it warrants a bigger conversation about that. And also I'm, I, you know, you've, you've got my mind thinking about what kinds of policies that we could do before implementing a vision like that. Like, for example, I love your suggestion of bringing forward as an agenda item, having a citywide policy that any, any project that we, development project that we have, that we, that we as a city have this commit to doing the same thing that we ask our, our developers to do. I mean, I think that there are like baby steps that we could take and then there's also a bigger vision that we could have. So I, I, I hear you.
That's a five-year plan as these big things that you want and then these little steps that are connected, you know? And then, you know, and, and if we sit and measure, did we do this? Did we not this? Or what are we doing that for? That wasn't on our list for that, you know, it's just, it just, it will lead you there, you know? So you have your eyes on the prize, but you, you measure every little step and make sure that you're not, um, attracted by shiny objects that show up in the meantime, which are beautiful, but they're not your job.
I know I'm stepping back, but any, if we do anything like a survey or reach out to the public, we're going to want to hear from all the commissions to make sure, did we capture what you would like? So I would love to see that as a real effort. Anything else?
Yeah, I got.
Yeah, please.
Just, you know, one of the bullet points is the, is the public art collection. And, you know, we just saw some valuable information about how some of it's at risk. And so, you know, the city goes through a process regularly about capital improvement. And there may be some maintenance worked into that. But, you know, somehow that issue needs to be worked into, and I don't know the right, you know, department where that comes through, but it needs, it needs to be considered and brought to us, an assessment, uh, you know, prioritizing which, which things need to be done quicker and, and, um, which, you know, get the most bang for the buck. And we could potentially set aside some amount of money, I don't know what that is, for, you know, annual maintenance of, of our public art.
Sounds good.
Yeah, you, you're, you're so right. And the conservation assessment told us that the more years of deferred maintenance, the more expensive this is going to be. It, it is a bit like the roads in that way. And so it would be great to set aside more money. And your point about where, where does this live? That's part of our frustration as well. We can't call Public Works. Bridgette has been great for the conservators. She worked with Public Works to have them get the, the hoses they needed, the, the high ladders they needed, the, the stanchion so, so the, the workers and the public were safe. But we can't do that.
So I think we will be looking to you for, if there was something that Mr. Whitman is proposing that becomes part of our budget, let us know, give us the scheme of that, you know, what's the right around. Ms. Wright, you were going to bring something up.
I just wanted to, um, thank the council and city staff, city manager. I've lived in a lot of small towns and I have friends in a lot of small towns. And we have a great town here. And I just, I'm getting emotional because, um, it's just incredible to see that we live in a great town and it's being run well. And, um, the people are happy and things happen. And I just want to thank you all for doing a great job.
Thank you so much. That's really nice. Yeah, I know, like what? I, I wanted to reflect that too, Ms. Mara. Thank you so much for, you, you added this into your already very busy schedule and thank, that's much appreciated. Yeah, very much. Yeah?
Just real quick, you know, the maintenance stuff on art is, is, is not like some rocket science thing. It's done all the time in a lot of places and we have choices, you know, we have, you guys can budget some. Maintenance is one. We have an arts fund, you know, that, uh, and then there, and then, uh, some of the ones, the, the owners are, you know, like the inn would be required to do it or something. This isn't, this isn't, it's not like magic money we need to find.
It's just, there's mechanics involved, so we need to have a conversation.
And it's highly specialized. That's the important thing. I mean, we know from, from, uh, Camilla's presentation. People have PhDs who are out there with rags and, uh, simple green. So, um, yeah, we can't simply do it ourselves.
Well, with that wonderful, thank you so much for coming. I'm making time. With that, we will adjourn, but we appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right.